I think we're ready.
Now, is it ready? Technical question first, is this the start of the Planning Commission meeting? Session from four to five.
We can do the pledge.
We can do the pledge at the...
Can anyone, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes. Isaac, are you there?
Yeah.
We're just getting ready to start.
Okay, great.
Go ahead and start.
Well, welcome everyone and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. As part of a beginning of a series of regular ongoing trainings, we're really excited to convene everybody here. I know we've had a small change in planning commissioners and we really wanted to start off a training series with a Planning 101. And so some of this might be a refresher, an overview for those that have been here for quite some time and for those that are new, hopefully you find this very engaging. There's a lot to cover, so we'll move kind of fast and I'm going to be operating the computer, but Isaac Rosen, who is the city attorney for the Planning Commission, is on the conference call and he's going to be leading the majority of this training. And then we'll end a little earlier, we'll allow for a transition and then we'll reconvene with the start of the Planning Commission meeting. So unless there's any other questions, I'm going to hand it over to you, Isaac.
Thanks so much, Mike, and good evening, or I guess good afternoon to our planning commissioners, including the new members and those I haven't had a chance to meet in person yet. Obviously, things are a bit different with COVID, so I appreciate the flexibility in being able to provide sort of this training remotely. And I'm fortunate enough that Mike's going to be working the machine for me as we go through this. Mike, if you want to move it to slide two, and then after that, I'll say next slide when I'm ready. But broadly, topics that we're going to cover, as Mike mentioned, for those planning commissioners that have sat on the commission for quite some time, many of these are likely to be familiar, but the idea is to provide a broad overview in this time we have for our new members and hopefully it serves, as Mike said, as a refresher moving forward. So we'll be talking a bit about the role and function of the Planning Commission under state and local law. We'll be talking about the general plan, which serves as the quote unquote constitution for land use decisions, our sort of north star. We'll be talking about the zoning ordinance adopted by the city and amendments made to the zoning ordinance. And we'll be also talking about development review and a permit process as that's articulated within our zoning ordinance, which is where our land use regulations live in the Avalon Municipal Code. And so it's where we're most concerned and focused on for our Planning Commission. We'll also be talking about the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA for short, that's the environmental review process that the city is bound by. It's a 1970 state law that has pretty broad, pretty broad consequences for our planning review. We'll be talking a little bit about the city's local coastal plan and the status of that. And then I'll be talking a little bit about some of the new housing related legislation that's come down recently from the state. That includes the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, otherwise known as SB 330, which has big implications for housing developers that may want to build units, residential units in the city. For our planning commissioners that have been on this body over the course of 2020, I'll be doing a brief refresher on accessory dwelling units, which may sound familiar. We did pass an ordinance when we were all together before the pandemic at the start of 2020 that deals with these ADUs for short. And then finally, there's a couple new, brand new bills that were just signed by the governor as part of this concerted housing push that I'll be talking on. Next slide, please. So the role and function of the Planning Commission. You know, I think it's important just to start broadly. Planning commissions, they are not mandated under California state law, but they are permitted and most cities, Avalon inclusive, rely on planning commissions to serve as sort of an advisory body to the city council. So while state law doesn't require any cities to have a separate planning commission body, they're an important tool for city planning to focus really on these land use and development issues. And I would note, there are specific state statutes that do require for those cities that have planning commissions that they do certain tasks that we'll be speaking about. So, you know, the biggest item that really comes to the planning commissioner, the biggest couple items is to help the city maintain its general plan that it adopts cyclically with a number of land use elements that we'll be talking of. And also to provide context and recommendations to the city council with respect to the city's zoning ordinance. Also, as our commissioners know, the commission acts on discretionary permits. So when something requires not only for staff to review an application that comes in, whether it's for a permit or a license or other discretion, or other tool to build, when it's discretionary, it often, most often comes to the planning commission, who must talk amongst themselves and make a determination whether it fits in the context of city regulations, both the general plan and zoning ordinance. And otherwise, you know, the planning commission's there to help, help the other city decision makers, the council, with land use and planning issues so that they can make fully informed decisions. Next slide, please. So briefly, talking a little bit, talking a little bit more about the role and function of the commission. Sometimes the commission will hold study sessions or meetings that are held simultaneously with the city council, which is permissible under the Brown Act. But when we're just dealing with planning commission meetings, we need a quorum of members, that means at least one more than half, to be present to conduct business. Because the planning commission is a legislative body under state law, we're subject to a number of Brown Act requirements that are listed here. That includes that we have our agendas posted for regular meetings at least 72 hours prior to the date of that meeting to inform the public. When we have special meetings like this training, it must be posted at least 24 hours advance notice. Public hearing items, so there are some city entitlements in which the planning commission makes a discretionary decision that require 10 days advance notice. So our office is often working with Mike and Roceo to make sure things are properly, properly noticed in the Islander. And also, it's important to remember that the commission as a Brown Act legislative body can only act on items that are included within the posted agenda. Another sort of housekeeping note related to the Brown Act, members of the planning commission should refrain from discussing items that are going to come before them for decisions outside of the context of the planning commission meeting itself. The idea is that the public has a fair shake and commissioners don't talk amongst themselves or in groups about official business that they're going to have to decide during a public meeting. These are, several of these are housekeeping notes. If there's a tie vote among the commission, which may happen if a commissioner is out or not every member is present, that means that the underlying action results in a denial if there's a tie. When the planning commission's being asked to consider discretionary permits, they can either approve the application or approve it with modifications. Sometimes the planning commission will add different conditions of approval to try to ensure that concerns are remedied when the applicant is present during the public meeting. And the planning commission, of course, also has the opportunity to deny an application. Additionally, the planning commissioners are required to file what's called a statement of economic interest with the Fair Political Practices Commission and work with the city attorney's office to ensure they recruit, recuse themselves, excuse me, from items that are close in physical proximity to their residence. Next slide, please. So the general plan, as I mentioned at the top of this presentation, under state law is known as quote unquote the constitution for future development. So every city and county in California has to adopt a general plan. It's the vision for long range growth and development in the city and generally it's updated cyclically, but it guides development decisions over the course of this, over its cycle until it's updated again with additional information. For quite some time, there were at least seven aspects of community growth and development that had to be included, although you'll notice at the bottom of the slide, we actually have eight mandated elements now. It was bumped up from seven to include an environmental justice element of the plan that going forward has to be addressed as of 2017. So for the planning commission, generally, the most important element is land use. That really sets out how certain zones and designations within the city can be developed. And we need to ensure that there is consistency between the general plan, the quote unquote constitution of the city, and its zoning ordinance, which is a bit easier to amend. And so sometimes cities all across the state run into issues where there's inconsistency. But importantly, the general plan is really our north star for development. And if there is a legally inadequate general plan, that can make certain land use approvals granted by the city vulnerable to challenge. And before we move on, just one other note about these eight mandated elements, we need to have horizontal consistency, which means all of these elements work in harmony as part of this larger general plan document. Next slide, please. And this is just a map and it will look familiar to some of our commissioners. It shows the city's limits as well as the land use designations that are contained within the general plan. And so again, we, what we often try to do is ensure the general plan, these land use designations are going to be consistent with our zoning ordinance, which we have a slide with a similar photo. Next slide, please. So just a little more background, as I've mentioned, this is the blueprint for future development, the general plan. And so it should also include, in addition to sort of designations and certain standards, it has more lofty sort of community goals and policies, sort of where the city would like to go in the future in terms of building out, to the extent, you know, the city can be built out. We obviously are in a small community on an island, but many of these goals and policies are meant to retain the unique character of Avalon, while still contemplating that there will be certainly future development. And I mentioned horizontal consistency in the last slide. We also have to ensure that the general plan, as I've mentioned, is consistent with our zoning ordinance, which lives in our municipal code. That's what's known as vertical consistency. The general plan is adopted between the city council and planning commission. Everyone sort of gets a look at it. It's the council that ultimately adopts it by resolution. And it can be amended up to four times per year. There's no limitation on amendments that involve affordable housing, but in most instances, most jurisdictions don't update their general plan that frequently. It's supposed to be, again, sort of the constitution that we cite back to, as opposed to something that's being changed more frequently, which we'll see and discuss a bit with our zoning ordinance. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about our zoning ordinance, we're talking about a goal of the city that underlies the changes we make in our municipal code to ensure that neighboring land uses within the city are compatible. So for example, residential units, residential uses are not generally compatible with, say, heavy industrial uses, and those should be separated within a city's zoning ordinance. So also, it's worth noting, you know, if a, if a land falls within a specific zone designation, that doesn't confer some sort of unconditional development right to the applicant, zoning designations are subject to change. And as I mentioned, that's why a number of cities sometimes have to pay close attention to ensure their general plan and zoning ordinance are consistent. The zoning ordinance is much more subject to changes and while the general plan can be amended, it's a, it's a more difficult process. So these are just basic components of the zoning ordinance. The city of Avalon has nine zoning districts. Often, those districts are split up between describing what the permitted use in the district, either principally permitted or conditionally permitted with a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission, or certain uses that are prohibited. And we'll get into development standards as we go on. Next slide, please. So this map should look similar, the shape, to our general plan designations. These are the zones for the city. I believe, although this is our most current map, I believe we now have a cemetery zone as well that's not reflected here. But this sort of gives a sense of how the city is organized into these districts and what makes sense in terms of different uses that may be next to each other. And so this is just clarifying, so we can move to the next slide. So the zoning ordinance also includes all of our development standards. These are pretty critical. Often, the planning commission will see development standards come up in applications that are seeking discretionary decisions by the commission, because if a applicant is not in compliance with the development standards that are specific to the zoning, zoning district in which the property is located, then they'll often need an entitlement. Sometimes that's a conditional use permit. Sometimes that's a variance, which should be granted really under sort of special circumstances so that the owner isn't prejudiced versus sort of surrounding landowners. But the development standards are meant to sort of keep development to a specific set of standards. And again, these are things that vary by the zoning district. Next slide, please. Really quickly, because these do come up quite a bit to the planning commission, these are other types of entitlements that are influenced by the zoning ordinance. There are specific plans, so we talked about the general plan. Specific plans are optional, unlike the general plan. They're often used as sort of a mini general plan for areas. For instance, a lot of cities might have a transportation corridor where certain mixed use is permitted. But the idea is the specific plan has a whole set of policies and regulations and goals on a much smaller area than the general plan, which of course is relevant to the whole city jurisdiction. Development agreements provide the developer that's seeking an entitlement, a vested right to construct, to construct a property in exchange for certain dedications or exactions from the city. And importantly, development agreement is a legislative act, so unlike our entitlements that we'll be talking about, it does not require findings. It often comes though, at the same time as other entitlements that do require findings. Inclusionary housing requirements. Avalon is really proactive when it comes to affordable housing, which is fantastic. So under chapter nine, the title 11 of the Avalon Municipal Code, title 11 being our zoning ordinance, we have an inclusionary housing requirement that requires that for both rental housing projects and also purchasable housing projects, that if there's more than five units being built, the developer has to set aside 20% of those units, which are available at an affordable rent, which means affordable rent is actually a term of art. Under state law, there's a certain formula for what constitutes an affordable rent that's based on the area median income of LA County. But Avalon's really out, out in front with sort of this progressive inclusionary housing requirement for housing development projects that want to build in the city, making sure that affordable units are built at that same time. It also included density bonus here. The city has its own density bonus regulations within that same chapter of title 11 within our zoning ordinance, but density bonus is actually a state mandate. Under state law, the city is required to provide a housing developer with a quote unquote density bonus in units when they designate certain units, again, at an affordable rent. So it means, for instance, that if a developer came in and was going to grant 10, 10% of the total unit to lower income households, then they would receive a density bonus, meaning they could, they could build potentially another or several additional units under state law. And it would also mean they were eligible for a development incentive or concession from our development standards. So for instance, if a housing developer came into the city and, and was going to covenant, meaning they deed restricted 10% of proposed units that were going to be built for, for affordable housing, not only could they build several extra units, but they could say, we also want a concession from the city's height standards, which would allow them to build a little bit higher than they would normally. And those are, density bonuses are still, of course, subject to health and safety concerns, but it's a state law mandate that's supposed to increase housing within our, within our state. Next slide, please. I'm not going to spend too much time on the development review and permit process, but this is a helpful chart to just see, you know, there are certain administrative planning decisions and permits that can be granted by staff, by the planning department. There are a whole bunch of permits and development review that must go to the city, that must go to the planning commission. And in some instances, for instance, when we're talking about a general plan amendment or a zone change, often it starts with the planning commission and then it goes up on either a recommendation or not from the planning commission to the city council. Next slide, please. Similarly, I'm not going to spend too much time on this slide. It sort of sets forth the general processing procedures. If someone wants to come in and submit a request for an entitlement or wants to be heard before the planning commission, but generally, it will come to the planning commission after staff has already diligently worked with the applicant, determined, compliance with city regulations and ordinances, and has made a determination with respect to whether or not staff feels it's in the best interest of the city to approve or deny the application or entitlement request. And then it will come to planning commission for a robust discussion and ultimately a determination. Next slide, please. So the California Environmental Quality Act, blissfully, I am not a CEQA attorney. We have a whole host of them at our firm. It's a very detailed area of the law, so I'm going to do my best to give the 30,000-foot view of it. CEQA, I think it's important to say, the purpose and intent of this legislation from 1970, which has really far reaching consequences, was not to stop development, but to try to afford the fullest possible protection to the environment by compelling the city and the government more generally to make decisions with environmental consequences in mind. For any of our commissioners that have worked with CEQA, you know, you know that, you know, that's up for debate. But the purpose of the law is supposed to be to identify the ways in which development's going to cause potential environmental damage, so that damage can be avoided or significantly reduced. And as well, it needs to be expressed to the public who has an interest in protecting environmental resources. Next slide, please. So I'm going to try to move through these really quickly and just highlight the portions of the CEQA process that are important for our planning commission. Next slide, please. So the very first component of CEQA is to determine whether or not the activity in question is a quote unquote project, subject to CEQA, that is actually a defined term. Next slide, please. And so these are examples of actions that are subject to CEQA. If you look at that list, you'll notice these are all items that probably look familiar because they are things that come to the planning commission. CEQA applies to discretionary public activities, so essentially, that's really most items that are going to be heard by the, by the commission. It does not apply to purely private activities, but I think that's a bit of a misnomer because, you know, any type of development in the city of Avalon is likely going to require one of these actions that are articulated here. And so in most instances, especially if someone's going to construct or renovate a property in the city, it's likely subject to CEQA. Next slide, please. There are certain actions not subject to CEQA. If the planning department has ministerial approval, meaning they need to just look at a series of sort of objective criteria to determine whether or not a permit should be granted, that's an example of a ministerial decision, that's not subject to CEQA. There are also other sort of city funding mechanisms when we're talking about the budget that may allocate specific money to certain programs, but there's no commitment to a specific development project, so that's something that would also be not subject to CEQA. Next slide, please. So step two, review for an exemption. I am going to spend a couple minutes on, on this step because it comes up a lot for the planning commission. As I mentioned, most discretionary items that are going to come before the planning commission are subject to CEQA. And so it's important for the city and for staff to look, to look to that law and see what projects may be exempt from the requirements to undertake a more substantial environmental review. Next slide, please. And here are the types of projects that are exempt from CEQA. There are some projects that are exempt expressly by state statute, so those are codified state laws. And more frequently, we see projects that are exempt pursuant to a categorical exemption. So these come from the CEQA guidelines, but they are codified exemptions, and we're going to talk about them briefly. There's a general rule that says CEQA only applies to projects, and remember, project is actually a defined term, which has the potential, a project is defined as something that has the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. So planning commission will also see items that comes, that come before the commission where it's clear that, you know, the action intended to be taken by the planning commission is not going to result in a significant effect on the environment, so that activity is exempt from CEQA under this general rule. Additionally, once a project is rejected or disapproved by a public agency, there's no more CEQA analysis required. Next slide, please. I want to talk really quickly about some of these categorical exemptions, because these come up quite a bit. So there is a categorical exemption from CEQA for existing facilities, and the key consideration there is, does the project involve negligible or no expansion of an existing use? So sometimes, and you'll detect a theme with some of these, but oftentimes, a project might come before the planning commission and because of our ordinances, it requires approval from the commission to treat the land in a different way, so whether that's a transient rental or to allow more sort of commercial tenants or things of that nature. Sometimes this exemption for existing facilities applies. Next slide, please. And here are just a couple examples from, from the CEQA guidelines. I'm gonna skip over this to the next slide in the interest of time. I think it's worth just remembering though, that within the categorical exemption, sometimes there are, are specific guideposts that help determine whether or not the categorical exemption applies. And so we should now be looking at class two, replacement and reconstruction. I included this one because it fits within that sort of broader theme, which is if you have a renovation of certain facilities and it's not going to have a larger footprint and it's for substantially the same purpose, then often a CEQA exemption, this class two CEQA exemption might apply. Next slide, please. Minor alterations to land, you know, I'm sure, I'm sure the commission is detecting a theme. If you have a minor alteration, similar to some of the other classes we've been talking about for categorical exemptions, for instance, if someone needs an approval from the planning commission for landscaping or temporary land use, that's not going to have an effect on the environment, generally, this is the categorical exemption that will apply. Next slide, please. I mentioned, and I'm not going to go through these, but here's just a couple examples of statutory exemptions. So, those categorical exemptions come up much more frequently. Those are housed within the CEQA guidelines. These are specific statutory exemptions that exist on their own, so to speak. But I am going to move along to the next slide. And here again, it's just that general rule exemption, often sometimes referred to as the common sense exemption. If it can be seen with reasonable certainty, there's no significant effect on the environment, then the activity is not subject to CEQA. Next slide. So, notice of an exemption. This is an optional step, but for instance, if an entitlement application comes before the planning commission and the commission and the staff recommends that one of those categorical exemption applies because maybe the land use is just receiving a minor alteration that's not going to affect the environment, then the commission might approve a resolution that includes that CEQA exemption. And then the city has this optional step to file a notice of exemption with the county clerk, and that limits the time in which someone who wants to challenge that approval under CEQA can file a claim. Next slide, please. If the project not exempt from CEQA, you have to determine the appropriate level of CEQA documentation. Next slide. So, these are heavy concepts, so I'm just going to go through them quickly. The basic types of CEQA documentation is either a negative declaration where, you know, a categorical exemption does not apply and a statutory exemption does not apply, but the project still, in spite of that, does not have a significant impact on the environment. The second type is a mitigated negative declaration. That means that the city, and sometimes with the help of a consultant, has determined that the project, sure, it's going to have, it's going to have a significant impact on the environment, but not after certain mitigation measures are incorporated. So, often, you'll see at the planning commission level that staff's worked diligently to ensure there are quote-unquote "conditions of approval," and sometimes those include these mitigation measures. So, if the planning commission approves, for instance, a conditional use permit, it may include certain mitigation measures to ensure there's not going to be a significant impact on the environment. And finally, the dreaded EIR, environmental impact report. This is a real full-scale environmental review, and so, when the project is going to have one or more significant impact, staff needs to work, sometimes with a consultant, sometimes not, to draft up one of these environmental impact reports that sets forth all the ways in which the project is going to impact the environment and what sort of mitigation measures are taken to try to lessen that impact. But that is the most expansive type of CEQA review that would be required. Next slide, please. So, I am going to hop over these in the interest of time. So, Mike, if you want to move to the next slide, contents of an initial study. I'm going to skip over this as well, so next slide, please. We have here just sort of the timeline for how an environmental review would be handled if there's not a CEQA exemption that applies. Next slide, please. And just a note about the notice of a determination, and this similarly relates to when an environmental impact report is required or another CEQA document. So, next slide, please. Okay, so, local coastal planning. In 1972, Proposition 20 was passed, that's the California Coastal Initiative. It enacted the California Coastal Act and established California Coastal Commission. And that's quite a mouthful, but essentially, it requires local agencies within a certain distance of the shore to create these LCPs, local coastal programs, that include land use plans and implementing ordinances and regulations for how the city is going to handle, you know, the unique and important environmental considerations that come with living near the water. Next slide, please. So, Avalon is entirely within the coastal zone as defined by the state. In 1981, our current LCP, our local coastal plan, was certified. And so, the city does issue coastal development permits, CDPs, for most areas within its limits. Those often come before the commission. The coastal commission does, however, issue permits for areas annexed since the LCP was certified in 1981. And you'll notice on entitlement applications that the city planning commission is often asked to determine whether or not the project falls within 300 feet of the mean high-tide line. And that's because those specific determinations by the city can be appealed directly to the state body, the coastal commission. Next slide, please. And I'm going to move past this to the next slide, which shows our coastal permit appeal area, that 300-feet designation that I was talking about. And I am going to move on to the next slide, Mike, if you don't mind. So, really quickly, the city's LCP, its local coastal plan, is outdated, so it doesn't presently comply with current state law. That said, the city's done significant work towards an update of its local coastal plan, including when the city updated its general plan in 2013. So, since that time, the California Coastal Commission has issued quite a bit of guidance to assist coastal cities like Avalon in addressing the potential effect of sea level rise. And it should be noted, the city's been certainly in contact with the California Coastal Commission. We received a grant, I believe, in 2017 from the coastal commission to sort of work on updating our local coastal plan and assessing sort of vulnerabilities on our coastline. And in speaking to Mike, it sounds like we have a sort of a timeframe set up through that award of grant funds. And so, no doubt, the commission will see items related to the local coastal plan, if not necessarily right away. Next slide, please. So, really quickly, the last part of this presentation is just to talk a little bit about housing laws that were passed by the state, by the governor both last fall and also more recently, just a couple weeks ago. The state has taken a keen interest in remedying what it describes as the housing shortage crisis. So, there's been a lot of state laws that have been passed that very much impact local control because the state wants to exert itself a bit to try to make up the issue with affordable housing stock. So, SB 330 is a big one that was passed in 2019. It's important because it limits the amount of discretion that the city has in regulating housing development projects, which are defined as residential units or certain mixed-use or transitional or supportive housing. And it makes changes to several existing state laws, but also adds the Housing Crisis Act. Next slide, please. So, the biggest takeaways of this and the ones I just want to mention here is that a housing developer now has the ability to go to a city and essentially say, "Okay, what items do you need from me?" as part of this pre-application. What sort of standards do you need from me? And the city will say, "Okay, well, here's our checklist. Here's what we need from you." And if the applicant submits all those, they receive a freeze in objective development standards. So, it means then, going forward over the course of their application, even if the city were to amend its zoning ordinance, the applicant received a freeze, and so, they're subject to the objective development standards in effect at the time their pre-application was approved. Next slide, please. So, the other important part that I, and part of the reason I wanted to mention SB 330 in particular, is because under this new law, we also have a hearing limitation. So, if a housing development project is submitted to the city, now there's a five-hearing limitation, and that's between the planning commission and the city council. So, it means between those two bodies, there can only be no more than five hearings to determine whether the project complies with the general plan and any sort of objective design standards or entitlements that need to be approved. And hearing is defined broadly. It includes steady sessions that might be held collectively by the council and the planning commission. It includes appeals, so if an item is rejected by the planning commission and it's appealed to the city council, those are two hearings. So, it's quite a big change, and we'll be mindful of it certainly with housing development projects that are submitted going forward. Next slide, please. This is a very detailed description of a residential housing project and stats that the city must go through, and I'm going to skip over that to the next slide, please. Accessory dwelling units. Again, this will be a refresher for our commissioners that served on this body earlier this year. We had to recently revise our ADU ordinance because the state came in and said, "Okay, we have even fewer instances where the city can exert local control." And the enforcement mechanism for that is that, basically, if a city doesn't have an ordinance that complies with every facet of the new state regulations, then it's considered null and void. So, the city worked through a revised accessory dwelling unit ordinance earlier this year. It requires that ADUs are approved ministerially, so the planning commission will not receive an application to consider an ADU. There may be other entitlements if that ADU is being newly constructed, but the actual approval for this structure is over the counter and is done by staff. And for those who don't know, an ADU is essentially an independent living facility, and generally, it's smaller. It's sometimes referred to colloquially as a granny flat or a second unit. And now, the city is much more restricted in how it can regulate those within its jurisdiction. Next slide, please. So, these are big changes from the state law that was passed last fall and went into effect January 1st, and I'm not going to focus too much on these, but I think it's just worth knowing that while the planning commission may not receive an ADU application itself, they were instrumental in talking through these changes and recommending amendments to the city's existing ADU ordinance within the zoning code that then went to council for approval. Next slide, please. And I will skip this one as well, Mike, if you don't mind moving to the next one. There are just a handful of instances with ADU where discretion at the city level is allowed, but let's move forward one more. This is our last slide, recent housing and land use legislation. I just wanted to make the commission aware that the state is continuing to focus a lot of its legislative firepower on housing and land use legislation. So, this won't be the last time that we talk about sort of changes that are coming down from the state. Undoubtedly, there are going to be more big changes in the pipeline, but this was part of a package of 15 or so housing and land use bills that recently passed, and I highlight them just because I thought they were interesting for the planning commission. There's AB 3182. It prohibits an HOA from enforcing a provision that would restrict homeowners from leasing or renting their units as long as it's not less than 25%. So, basically, it says an HOA can't restrict the rental or leasing of units to less than 25% of homeowners. And there is an exception for short-term rentals. And then, AB 1561, and by that, I mean, an HOA can certainly prohibit short-term or transient rentals in the complex. And then, AB 1561 is COVID-related, so I thought it was interesting just to mention. It basically says that housing entitlements as defined are extended by 18 months, stemming from, you know, the impact COVID certainly had on all of our agencies and Avalon specifically. So, that means that certain types of permits and entitlements that may have otherwise lapsed or have been canceled, those that qualify, and there's specific statutory language on what qualifies, is extended by a significant amount of time. And I think it just stems from that time period in March where it was unclear how everything was going to function in the pandemic. So, next slide, last slide, we're done. So, I appreciate everyone's time, and I know that's a ton of information, and I'm sure it's not easy doing this remotely and to not be present with you and try to read your faces about what we can talk more about. But if there are items that you want to discuss more at a further planning commission meeting, then please let Mike or me know, and we can certainly do a deeper dive on any of these concepts. I want to be cognizant that we're going to take a little break now before we start our regular meeting.
Were there any questions? Well, thank you all. For any future, like Isaac said, for any future training opportunities or topics that you have in mind, please just let us know. And we would like to make this a regular, ongoing series, not necessarily every month, but at least at regular intervals, three or four times a year.
I just have one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Isaac. On the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit new laws, so these are the new ones that came in effect after the first ADU law? Well, the ADU law-
So, these ones-
The ADU law that I read, and I could have misread it, but I, it said that they tie into the existing water main, all the utilities, so it wouldn't require a water allocation. That's what I understood when it first came to us, and I think we all understood it at that point. And then, after, I think, ADU went up, they said it needed to have a water allocation. And I see here, it says adequate water and sewer services in consultation with utility providers. So, right here, it says that it seems like it would have to have a water allocation right here, but when you read the law, the way-
Yeah, I think that's right, and I know we talked about this with how water is allocated as sort of something that the applicant would need to sort of confirm with California Edison. So, I would probably have to look into that because my recollection is it's pretty nuanced about the water hookup. I think to some degree, you know, the applicant, we need to be apprised of how that's going to happen in terms of what's going to happen with the unit, but yeah, I think as written, it's accurate that the utility provider ultimately is going to have a hand in whether or not it can be hooked up. And ADUs can rely on sort of the primary dwelling for it in terms of being able to be hooked up as long as that provides those adequate services.
So, I think we need to make that really clear with everyone because when the administrative, it goes through the administrative desk, they get all the permits, they pay for all the permits for the ADU unit, they build it, so now they're in for hundreds of thousands of dollars, and then it was stopped because it didn't have a water allocation. So, it needs to be cleared up, so this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, I think, definitely, and I think it's worth a more substantive discussion, and we could certainly bring it back because it's a complicated area in terms of how it's framed, as you know, in sort of state law. So, I know we had discussions at the time the ordinance went forward, which was, you know, based on sort of our review and sort of our template for what's permissible under state law, but I think it's certainly a good idea to try to bring it back in short order so we can talk through the details of it and make sure it's clear for any of our applicants what the state law says.
And Isaac, you and I can connect offline, and what we can do is put together a memo for the planning commission-
Yep.
-talking a little bit about what those clarifications are and also to talk through what that process is. Just as a reminder, no building permits will be issued until a letter from Edison has attached with that, so.
That would be wonderful. Because the law does state that when you tie in, that you have the water. So, when you accept those permits and the money and you cash a check, you're saying that they have the water, and then going back is kind of like backpedaling, and it's kind of scary. It seems like a liability.
Yeah, we'll get that clarified, and we'll have that put together within the next couple weeks.
Thank you, Isaac, and thank you.
You bet.
Well, unless there's any other questions, thank you all, and we will reconvene in about five minutes.
Thank you.
Is that a thumbs up?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands one nation, united, civil, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Dodgers.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Here.
Chairman Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Putnam?
Here.
Commissioner Seig?
Here.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Here.
Looks like we're all here today.
Okay. The consent calendar, looks like we have two things, the minutes, and then a resolution?
Yes, so one consent calendar, we have the actions for September 16th and the resolution number 20/12. This is for the signed variants for 125 Sumner Hotel at Water, and since we have a couple commissioners who are not here in the September meeting, I will have Commissioner Kennedy, Commissioner Putnam, and Commissioner Phillips abstaining from this item. Any other members, whenever you lead me, we will have a first and a second on the voting.
Okay. So excluding those three, anybody would like to make a motion on both the minutes and the resolution?
I'll make a motion on both.
Second?
I second it.
Okay. Call for a vote? Or can we say all aye?
We should call for a vote. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
And Commissioner Seig?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
So the first item we have under the public hearing is a consideration of a resolution recommending City Council amend the Avalon Municipal Code to establish a new transient rental licensing system. Over the past year, a little bit longer, the Avalon Planning Commission has held a series of continuous public discussions regarding the city's existing transient rental approval process. Currently, transient rentals, or these are the short-term rentals, or rentals of fewer than 30 consecutive days, are regulated by a conditional use permit, or CUP, which runs with the land. This means that the CUP stays with the property regardless of the transference of ownership, so when properties sell, or intensity of use. The new proposed system would change the regulation from the CUP to a transient rental license, similar to, like a business license. At the regular Planning Commission meeting in March, the commission directed staff to amend the transient rental ordinance to incorporate feedback from the previous City Council meeting and clarify two items that they had sought direction from. The first one was on public hearing and notice provisions. Specifically, the commission requested a public hearing is necessary prior to the issuance of a license, and that the provision remains the same. If council adopts the ordinance, the Planning Commission will reconsider the notice requirements in two years as directed by staff. The second item was in regards to the transferability provisions and the allowance of a transient rental license through a family trust and certain direct family members. Permitted transfers will be treated as a first sale described in the amortization provisions. And if you recall, what we were directed to look at was upon this transitioning, all property owners with an existing CUP would be allowed to keep that CUP. On the first sale, that new owner would keep the CUP, and then upon the second sale, that's when it would convert to a business license system. This item with the requested revisions was originally scheduled to be brought to the Planning Commission in April 2020. However, due to COVID-19 and some retirements, the item was subsequently delayed, and it's one of the reasons why we're finally bringing that back, so I do apologize for that delay. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution recommending that City Council amend Section 9-6.602 of Article 6 of Chapter 6 of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code, delete subsections D through F of Section 8-8.404 of Article 4 of Chapter 8 of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code, and amend Section 9-8.801 of Article 8 of Chapter 8 of Title IX of the AMC, amend subsection B of Section 9-8.802 of Article 8 of Chapter 8 of Title IX of the Avalon Municipal Code, and add a new Article 3 to Chapter 1 of Title III of the AMC to establish a new transient rental licensing system. And with that, I'm open for any questions. And I have Isaac on the line, too, who can answer any questions as well.
Okay, so refresh my memory, because it's been a while. So it went to the City Council, they approved what we recommended the first time, then it comes-
Yeah, I believe you had sought guidance on some of the amortization questions, and they had provided some additional direction. That was brought back in March and discussed, and after that discussion, there was some further clarification and direction that the Planning Commission had given. One of those was what I had mentioned before on the public hearing and notice provisions, and then the second item was on the transferability provisions, getting some additional clarification. So staff went back, worked with the city attorney's office to incorporate those directions into the new ordinance, and City Attorney's Office went one step further and added some very clear examples so that it clarified some of the intent of the law.
So if we approve this, then it goes back to the council?
Correct. So if you approve this resolution, what we will do is, this will be put onto the City Council agenda for November 10th. City Council then will consider it, and that'll be the first reading. If they pass it, it'll go to a second reading in December, at the beginning of December, and staff's recommendation is instead of a 30-day implementation period, we are requesting a 60-day implementation period, so it will become effective 60 days after February 1st, 2021, just to allow for a little bit of additional time to transition that system from the CUP to the license.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
I support this entire process, but I have two areas of concern. I believe that the application fee to get a CUP is excessive, and I'd like to define what our intent is as far as an annual renewal fee. What is staff's recommendation there?
Isaac, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can include that new fee into an amended fee schedule for council's consideration and look at proportionally reducing that fee, because it no longer is treated as a permit that runs with the land. This would be a fee that would be more commensurate with a licensing.
Right.
That's correct. It would ultimately be approved as a resolution, like Mike said.
So any-
And by doing it, and just to add, by doing the fee via resolution, it sort of actually provides the city a little bit more flexibility with respect to setting that fee as opposed to having it sort of codified within our municipal code. And sort of a callback to the presentation, because we're amending, and because of the question on the procedure, because we're amending our zoning code ordinance, the Planning Commission's being asked to recommend this to City Council, and then the City Council has to hold two public hearings, or well, one public hearing and two, over two successive meeting dates to consider that item.
I guess what he's saying, though, because $3,200 is ridiculous. I remember being here-
Okay.
Seven hundred bucks.
Let's go ahead and just keep asking questions, then we'll do the hearing, and then we'll talk about amending the ordinance, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Because I think we're gonna jump into ideas that might be best appropriate after the hearing.
Okay.
If that's okay. But anymore-
And just for clarification, there's a placeholder right now for the license fee under Section 3-1.308, and it just says that the fee for filing will be the same as the conditional use permit until further established. So there's a recognition that the fee is not necessarily proportionate for the licensing structure, but that fee has not been determined. So there's a placeholder in there, just kind of stipulating that.
Here's a question. Is the process gonna be significantly different? I mean, they're still coming to the Planning Commission? If they go through-
The biggest change is the renewal, because the license will renew, they'll have to apply for a renewal-
Pay every year.
Every year on an annual basis.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And so there could potentially be a renewal fee, but outside of that, fundamentally, no. There's no change in how those are determined and allocated.
Okay, thank you.
But that big fee also, that permit, was forever, you know, so that-
Okay, I get it. You get my concern there.
Oh, yeah.
So-
I mean, it could be 3,200 bucks to do it, that's insane.
And the reality is-
Could pay you 12%.
Okay. I'm not suggesting anything should be free, but it should be comparative to the amount of effort, the staff time, and, you know, the legal resources, you know, that's spent, legal resources and so on, not just an arbitrary, you know, I think the 3,200 or whatever it is now is excessive.
I think it's 37.
Any other topics before we open the public hearing?
Go for it.
Just to cut it, okay, we're good. Open the public hearing.
The city, we do not have any comments that have come through, but the city did receive two letters, and both of those were included with the commissioner's packet, so just wanted to enter that into the record.
So anybody in the audience wish to speak?
I'm a little nervous.
Okay. Thank you, audience. I'm gonna close the public hearing, but give a couple of minutes if everybody wants to read this or skim through the two letters that we have. So seeing no one wishing to testify, close the public hearing. And I guess I would like if anybody would have a comment on, does anybody have a comment or idea, or any issues with the public comment that we received via the letters? I know the one was, that stood out to me, was the idea of not having the transfer apply when it's within family members. Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Brian was saying something about that, right?
So it is permitted, you can, for the question in regards to deeds and transfer of trust, that is permitted, but it would count as the first sale.
So-
Yeah, so right now, it doesn't matter who you're selling it to.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's what was in this letter.
Well, the letter says, could you make an exception for if I sell it to a family member?
So I-
Does anybody have? I don't remember discussing.
I don't think we ever discussed that, actually, but that is actually a good point.
So Michael, it works the same way for the second sale? Is, so if I were to pass it to my child, and my child passed it to their child, that would be the second sale, correct? And so they would no longer have it?
Yeah, it's the actual act of the transference of deed, so not necessarily that you're naming your kids or any other party as part of the trust. That wouldn't trigger the sale. It would be once that deed transfers over, that that would be considered the first sale. So upon the second time, rather, they'd still be able to rent it, but they would have to apply for the license rather than take advantage of the conditional use permit. So there's that amortization period that, you know, is still in effect and would still eventually transition people from holding on to a CUP to moving forward to the license, which is fundamentally what the Planning Commission was discussing in the beginning.
One thing I didn't read, if that happens, so let's say my grandchild gets the house, do they have to go through the process of reapplying? Or is it, oh, you have a CUP, now you can have the business license? Or is it a whole new, you know, like it's brand new again?
The second time, the first time it's not, the second time it is. So I think what this is saying, do we treat family members especially or different than we would anybody else?
I'm gonna say no.
Well, right now, that's not allowed. I'm not, I don't really-
The only deal, it's in a trust, and the trust is-
A trust, if it was in a trust, it wouldn't be transferring, so it wouldn't-
Yeah, it's not in the trust.
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a reason to do it. If you had a family trust, it stays in the trust. There are ways you can assure that, but-
No, I see no.
Yeah, okay. So I don't see any support for that. Anybody have any changes? I guess with the fees, just take a look at it and make sure it's fair. Right. And-
But it sounds to me like, in the big scheme of things, we won't have any say over that, so.
Right, and that's a separate issue.
It'll be established in a fee schedule, just so as long, you know, the council's aware that, at least I'm concerned about it.
Staff, the one thing I will say is staff will take the comment and definitely put that into the thought process behind the fee, so when we're looking at what those fee, recommending what those fees should be, we will definitely take the fact that we're changing fundamentally an entitlement to a licensed structure, and also the fact that it'll need to be renewed. So once that is been recommended, I can also put that in a memo and circulate it to the Planning Commission so that you are appraised of direction.
Perfect. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to see that we go over what those fees are paid for and what is actually done. I mean, we have these standard things, whenever we give a CUP now, that gets inspected by this and that. Those things aren't happening, and that's this cost for all of our fees, but specifically this. I'd like to see a breakdown and see what actually gets accomplished on a checklist.
Any other issues on this ordinance, or does anyone want to make a motion?
All motion to accept, that is it.
Okay.
I'll second.
So move to the second. Any final comments before we vote? Seeing none. Call for a vote?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Putnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Seig?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Already all ayes, thank you.
Item number two. Yeah, Mike, please.
Looking for my notes. So the second item before you is a public hearing for an application for a site plan and two variances. One variance is for a floor area ratio, the second variance is for a second-floor setback and a coastal development permit. This is for a unit over at 336 and 336 and 1/2 Euclidus Avenue in the high-density residential zone. The existing project, or the existing unit, is a one-story, one-bedroom, one bathroom and one studio, one-bath duplex. They are, the applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structure and construct a two-story duplex with the same number of bedrooms and bathrooms, add an autoet parking space and a deck on the second floor. The project is in the coastal zone and is subjected to a coastal development permit, which will require this public hearing. And in terms of SEQA, the project is categorized, I'm sorry, I skipped over. The owner is Lawrence and Sherry from Getty. The applicant is Fine Line Construction, and he is here in the audience. The project, in terms of SEQA, is categorically exempt under Section 15301D and E2A and B of the state SEQA guidelines. We just went over these, but just as a reminder, these are, the categorical exemption is made based on the restoration or rehabilitation of structures or facilities, as well as the additions to existing structures, provided that the additions will not result in an increase of- increase of more than 10,000 square feet if the project is in an area where all public services and facilities are available to allow for maximum development permissible in the general plan and that the area in which the project is located is not environmentally sensitive. The project, as mentioned before, is also in the coastal zone and is subjected to the coastal development permit, which staff has determined that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, and there is a map included in the staff report detailing that. So, in terms of the site plan, the project currently exists as a 662-square-foot, one-story, one-bedroom, one-bathroom and one-studio, one-bath duplex. The project will add some additional square footage. The first floor will be approximately 684 square feet, and will have the one-bedroom, one-bathroom unit. The second floor will be the second unit and will consist of 647 square feet. The project will add off-street autoet parking space on the northeast side of the lot abutting the alley, and will construct a deck on the second floor. The building height is proposed at 24 feet 6 inches, which is below the permitted height. And then, in terms of the two variances, the first variance is for the maximum floor area ratio. The standards of development in this zone is a maximum of 130%, however, the applicant is requesting a variance to increase that to 135%, which is a difference of approximately 49 square feet. The second request is for a variance for the two-foot front second-floor setback. Our municipal code requires second stories to have a minimum 10-foot setback from the front property line, excluding decks, balconies, or other architectural features that are designed to limit massing. The submitted plans and application indicates that the setback that's being proposed is eight feet, so the two-foot difference. The municipal code does permit the planning commission to grant variances with such conditions that, as are deemed necessary in order to protect public health, safety, and general welfare. Variances from the terms of the zoning ordinance may only be granted when the zoning ordinance denies the property whose unique character, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, deprive of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under identical zoning classifications. The lot that this is on is actually narrower than most of the other lots on Eucalyptus, and many of the other lots do have variances or other mitigating factors that allow them to have other privileges not enjoyed by this. So, it is staff's recommendation that the planning commission make the following findings: find the project categorically exempt under SEQA, section 15301D and E2A and B; adopt the findings and approve the coastal development permit, and make the determination that the project's not within the 300-foot appealable zone; adopt the findings sufficient to approve the setback and floor area ratio variances; and then approve the site plan as proposed with the standard listed conditions, which are also included in your packet under exhibit A. And as mentioned, I also have Pete Edwards from Fine Line Construction here, who can answer. Any questions, ask an I.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, any questions for staff? Not for Pete yet, we'll wait for the public hearing to ask Pete. Okay, seeing none, let's open the public hearing. Member of the audience, would you like to speak?
I'll go first. So, the, we've been doing these little houses for a long time, and in this particular case, I mean, it's remarkable the difference of a house you can get on a 20-foot wide lot or even to a 22-foot wide lot. This one happens to be 18 foot 5 and 1/2 inches wide, which makes a lot of, it makes it a lot more challenging to get a reasonable building on that. So, we thought, wouldn't be asking too much, to be able to push, to have the second-story setback be eight feet instead of 10 feet, which falls in line with the intent of that ordinance to kind of have everything sort of step back on the second story. And the difference between eight and 10 is two feet. So, it really helps as far as what's left over in terms of a building, useful building. And then, the additional 130% to 135% partly is caused from that, but that effectively is the size of one and a half pieces of plywood, so it's not a huge amount of space, but when you've got something that's small, one and a half pieces of plywood is useful. So, we made sure that we kept the side yard setbacks the same as everybody else, regardless of the width of the lot. And we do have, they do have two units there. They wanted to have one, so one of them's gonna be a year-round rental and one'll be for other use. And so, we'd like to, please have to consider letting this one go.
Pete, the autoet parking doesn't exist currently.
There was no autoet parking before, there's one now.
So, we've got a cart off the street.
Yeah, there's an alley access, so if you can hit that.
Anybody else with questions for Pete? Okay, thank you. Close the pub, no, anybody else wishing to speak? Close the public hearing. Any comments or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the project with the four staff-recommended findings.
A second.
Okay, moved to the second. Any further discussion before a vote? Seeing none, we'll seal if you can please-
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Chairman Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Putnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Seig?
Aye.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
All ayes, thank you.
Michael, item number three, please.
Public hearing, item number three. This is a public hearing for an application for a site plan and coastal development permit to reconstruct an existing two-story, four-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence with a four-bedroom, three-bathroom, two-story family residence at a new off-street parking space and at a second-floor deck. The project is within the coastal zone and is subject to a coastal development permit, which requires a public hearing and planning commission approval. The planning commission will determine whether the project is within the 300-foot appealable seaward area boundary. The project is categorically exempt under section 15301, DE2AB of the state SEQA guidelines. The owners of the property are Terry Tyler and Jennifer Remson. The applicant is Fine Line Construction. In the audience, we have Pete Edwards. And the zone for this property is high-density residential. The coastal development permit, based on the map below, the staff recommendation is that the planning commission make the finding that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone. Avalon Municipal Code, section 9/8.103D, requires that the city make the following findings: that the project complies with the local coastal development plan; the project is consistent with the goals and objectives of the California Coastal Act; the project conforms and is consistent with the goals and objectives of the coastal, California Coastal Act; the project is in the, conforms with the certified local coastal program for the city of Avalon, which includes the Avalon General Plan, the local coastal plan for Avalon, as well as Avalon zoning and affordable housing ordinance. The proposed project complies with all applicable standards for the ordinance as set forth in the Avalon General Plan, Municipal Code, and certified local coastal program. The project has received all necessary local approvals issued by the planning commission, including growth ordinance, pre-approved, together with water allocation as may be required. Upon obtaining approval of the requested variance as proposed or modified, the proposed project will have received all necessary local approvals issued by the planning commission. For all development seaward of the nearest public highways to the shoreline, the proposed development conforms to public access and recreational policies of chapter three of the Avalon Coastal Act. The proposed project is not located seaward of the necessary public highway to the shore. The proposed, I'm sorry, the property currently exists as a 1,274-square-foot, two-story, four-bedroom, two-bathroom, single-family residence. The project proposed to demolish the existing structure and construct a 1,360-square-foot, four-bedroom, three-bathroom, two-story family residence at a, at a new off-street parking space and a second-floor deck. The project conforms to all zoning codes and ordinances. In order to approve the site plan, the Avalon Municipal Code requires that the planning commission make the three findings under Avalon Municipal Code, section 9/8.203. These findings and corresponding explanations of the project's compliance with these three findings are as follows: Every used development of land and application of development standards shall take place in compliance with all applicable provisions of this title. As proposed, the project is in allowed use in the high-density residential zone and complies with all development standards. Every used development of land and application of the development standards shall be considered on the basis of suitability of this site for the particular use of development intent and total development, including the application of prescribed development standards, shall be arranged as to avoid traffic congestion, ensure the protection of public health, safety, and general welfare, prevent adverse effects on neighboring property, and shall be in general accord with the elements of the general plan. All the surrounding properties are developed with single or multifamily residences. Therefore, the site is suitable for the proposed use, and the use is consistent with the existing and extended land use of high-density flats as set forth in the general plan. Every used development of land, application of development standards, shall be considered on the basis of suitable and functional development design, but is not, but is not intended that such approval be interpreted to require a particular style or typical architecture. The design of the, the design of the proposed remodel is suitable for a residential structure. And staff recommendation, based on the findings, staff recommends that the planning commission finds a project categorically exempt under SEQA, section 1501, DE2AB, existing facilities; adopt the findings and approve the coastal development permit, and make the determination that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone; and approve the site plan as proposed with the standard list of conditions with the exhibit A attachments.
Can you, what's the SEQA section?
15301.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, open the hearing. Mr. Pete Edwards, would you like to speak?
This is, I mean, really, this is nothing other than a tired old house being torn down and replaced with a new one. It's not, there's no variance request, there's no, everything fits in the box and-
You've been a busy boy on Eucalyptus.
Pardon me?
You've been a busy boy on Eucalyptus.
Yeah, I know.
That's his street.
Kind of busy there, so-
Prior, did it have any off-street parking like it does now?
There's parking in the back, usual. There's none now.
There's none now, so this is an addition, and we're talking about 86 square-foot difference between the existing structure and the new one. I said, this is, the off-street parking doesn't exist right now, but will with your plan.
Correct.
And the difference in square footage of this structure-
The 100.
Is, is, is how much?
It's like a little over 130, maybe?
Is that what it is? Okay. Yes. So, it's not that much bigger. But it'd be a nice new house.
Yeah, the people have a house, we did across the street, a couple of years ago. Everybody seems to like, so, similar, good taste, so.
Any questions?
Yeah. How do you get to the loft?
How big is the lot?
The loft.
The loft is-
Essentially on the third floor, I mean, as part of the roof.
The ceiling height in the loft, I think, is around six feet. I don't have a plan there with me.
Well, I just wonder how you get there.
A ladder, we've done that in a few little places.
A ladder straight up from the one below? Because otherwise, you're on the third floor, essentially, all closed in with one stairwell.
I'm sorry, I'm deaf, and everybody's speaking through filters, so I can't hear well. So, you can see the wall height in the loft is three foot one, and it tapers up with the, with the, with the ceiling. So, at the very peak, it'll probably be about six feet, and the exterior walls, it's three Does that help?
I just didn't know, if you're up in the loft and there's a fire, what do you do? Because I can't, unless it's, it doesn't, I don't know, I can't see what, how you would get up and down. And if it's a ladder to the bedroom below, that would be the answer, I suppose.
I still can't hear you speak, scream right in your microphone, if you were-
She's curious how you get in and out of the loft.
A ladder.
A ladder.
A ladder, okay.
Yeah. We've done that in a few houses, little kids like to go play up there, and-
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be in the loft.
Any other question?
Yeah, yeah, I've got another question. So, the one side, and since this is a total demo, you've got the, you know, you've got a 12-inch side, is that the one that's on this? I mean, it says left, so I don't know, is that uphill side?
I'm sorry, the uphill side?
Well, you've got 12 inches, a 12-inch setback. I'm sorry, this is the first time that I wasn't able, I didn't get by there to look at it, so I don't know how close 12 inches from the property line equates to how close is it to the next property?
To the adjacent property?
To the, I don't know, I don't know who lives in 330, I guess it'd be 338.
12 inches on one side and three feet on the other?
Well-
So, there's four feet between the two, is what you're saying?
Is that, I mean, it's typical. I'm not sure I'm understanding your question.
Okay, there's a photo attached here, looking straight at the front of the building. It looks like the uphill side is possibly a wall, it looks like, you know, it's, you know, with no windows. This building has a lot of windows on both sides, so if you're only set back, I mean, I don't know how far the other one is, or is it on a zero-lot line deal? I don't know.
The uphill acre you're talking about?
This is the first time I've never been by a place.
Yeah, Pete, if you could just explain the side yard setbacks on both sides.
So, the side yard on, on-
And just for clarification, and just looking at the application and at the plans in front of me, it looks like they're in conformance with all of the setback requirements.
Well, I mean, that was, there was an existing, so I don't know, but that's, then if you do a 12, 12-inch setback, is, is that gonna be, I mean, this has happened on Sumner before, you get, you get pushed in, and it just becomes, you know, if you can't get in, I mean, nothing gets cleaned there- get in, I mean, nothing gets cleaned there, or whatever, but in your case, there's a lot of windows on that side, so I...
Now, this is, this is very typical of, of a house, a new house and a flats, where you have a 3-foot setback on one side, which allows you to have openings, and a less than 3-foot setback, or 12 inches in most cases, on the, the other side, which creates a firewall. And in the firewall, we use a fire-rated glass block, and that allows for some light, and the illusion of, of an opening, which makes it, keeps, allows some light come in, and lets it feel like a window.
No, I understand firewalls. What I'm saying is, how close is this to the next building on the 9-inch setback side?
Well, I don't know, that's, that's on the...
12-inch, 12-inch, excuse me. X-9-inch.
I, I, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, how's that? I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, so if the other one's on the, I mean, this happened on Sumner a few times, and, you know, it created an impossible small space where there's nothing but a trash gathering area, because you couldn't really get through there if, you know...
You can actually get in on 12 inches of space, we've figured out. We have to make a little scaffold, you can get in there, you can paint it, you can maintain the building, if, even if the other person is right on the property line.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And this one, we didn't receive any correspondence, I don't believe, or...
We have not.
Okay. So, any discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the project based on the three staff recommended findings.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and second. Any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, we'll seal.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hewitt?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chairman Hewitt.
Yes.
Put, Commissioner Putnam?
Aye.
Commissioner Seig?
Yes.
And Commissioner Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any reports from the planning director?
I just had one, at the last planning commission meeting, we had talked about a grant that the city had received. We actually have two different funding sources. We have one from Caltrans and one from the California Coastal Commission, and these funds are to be used to develop a long-range plan for how sea level rise and climate change will impact the city's coastal resources and infrastructure. We are well underway within that effort. However, we will be having, one of the requirements in order to develop that plan is to solicit and get the feedback from the community and the general public. And so, we've been working with the city's contractor on this, Moffitt and Nichols, and we will be holding two different public engagement meetings on the, not this week, but the following week. One of them is on the 27th, and this is going to be an in-person meeting. This meeting will take place here at the Avalon City Council Chambers from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This is their opportunity to really talk a little bit more about what climate change is, what sea level rise is, and then also identify and prioritize what, when we talk about climate change, you know, what are the things that are most important to you? Everything from sea level rise, to wildfires, to erosion, anything that they can think of, and that'll really inform the strategies. The second community engagement portion of that will be on the 28th, the following day, and that is a virtual meeting. It's identical to the in-person meeting, just for those of individuals that are not able to make it to the in-person meeting to provide those input. And that'll be from 11:30 AM to 1:30 PM. So, there is a link, you can watch live at avalonslr.com. If you go there, you can participate in that meeting. And then following that, we will come back to the planning commission to provide an update on where, what the progress is on that plan, and what community has had to say about that. We'll be doing future community engagement efforts, but this is really the first of the two, and that's all I've got. Isaac?
None on my end. Thank Mike.
Okay, any commissioner business?
I met with some homeowners today that were concerned that something that had been approved is not being built as approved. I've told them to direct their questions to their city manager, who'll be passed along from there, just to make sure it's all being done as it was originally approved.
I believe that same homeowner contacted me as well, and so I think we directed her to Denise, so hopefully Denise, the city can...
I received the emails.
Huh? Okay, good. I mean, we, I don't have all the information, so...
There were three people, so I'm sure I should have...
But I would like to know, like, the status after as well, you know, because we, we were the ones that did approve, so we just want to make sure it all is kosher. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one piece of business. Where are we with the reviewing of development agreements? Specifically, Hamilton Cove. I believe that there's some provisions within their development agreement that require some paving, some parking, and a fire engine for the city of, city of Avalon within their development agreement. Is somebody within staff following up on the provisions of that agreement, so that they're not in breach?
I can tell you about the paving right now that just got started. They're putting in the curb right now from the hairpin at Descanso up to the front gate. And that's something, I'm on the board there, that we've been wishing for the developer to do, that he was behind in doing, and he has stepped up to do that.
I saw that. I was wondering what it was.
Yeah. Well, I saw Denise nodding in the back of the room, so I'm satisfied. Perfect. That's all I have.
Anything else? Anything from the audience?
I have nothing.
Okay, that's it. Well, adjourned. Thank you. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.
Roger's.